Good afternoon, all. We're called the Ventura County Consolidated Oversight Board Meeting to Order of November 18th. And if we may have a roll call vote, please. Roll call, excuse me.
Board Member Dean?
Here.
Board Member Brook?
Here.
Board Member Mishler?
Here.
Board Member Powers?
Here.
Board Member Simons?
Present.
Chair Alfatall?
And now, if we may advance to the pledge, I'll ask Member Dean if he can start us off. Thank you.
May I open your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands: "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common."
Thank you. And now for members, if we can look at the minutes of our September 23rd meeting, continued from October 28th, and look for a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
That was Simons made the motion and Mishler the second?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can I make a comment before?
Yes, I was going to just say, any discussion? Go ahead. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. It's regarded, back at that time, item 13 was, I recall, City of Oxnard came with a list of assets to be, that they wanted transferred, and we had some questions about that, and they were to return in April of this year, although we have had quite a bit of other actions going on. But to report back on that, and I would like to ask them or make the motion to approve these minutes, but also make the request that they return to report on that at the next board meeting.
Mr. Bravo, did we receive anything from them?
No, we haven't received anything from them, but in those, the minutes that were, that he's referring to, that actually occurred way back in our meeting, prior to that.
So those minutes have already been approved?
Yes.
And the report came forward?
Yeah, yeah, but-
It came forward?
No, no, no report has come forward, yes.
I'm referencing the wrong minutes, you're sorry.
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that item will be coming up shortly in, on this current agenda.
I'll make that motion then. I'll be quiet. Thanks.
Okay, so any other comments or discussion? Yes, Mr. Dean?
Yes, I was ill on the 28th, and so I missed that meeting, but the September 23rd, I was here.
Okay.
Just out for your understanding.
Yes, and the minutes are from September 23rd. We didn't have quorum, and so the October 28th meeting did not occur. We started it, but didn't really start it officially. So, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. We'll do roll call votes, sorry.
Board Member Mishler?
Aye.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brook?
Aye.
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Here.
And Chair Alfatall?
Motion carries, thank you. Our next item is Agenda Review. Are there any changes considered, or we're good with the agenda as stated?
I have a few items. So for item number 12, we're requesting to remove Oxnard from the list of cities making presentations today. They will return in January. On that same item, Moor Park has submitted a revised PowerPoint presentation, and for item number 13, a PowerPoint presentation has also been submitted by the City of Oxnard.
Well, I'm sorry, would you repeat the second one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Moor Park has submitted a revised PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, for number 12?
For number 12, yes.
Okay. Member Dean, did you have a question? No? Any other, so with those items, we'll have a roll call vote for the agenda, the revisions?
Do you need a motion?
I apologize. Yes, I, you know, normally we have meetings in the morning, I think, not the afternoon. Maybe this is the issue for me. Yes, is there a motion to approve with the revisions as stated?
So made.
Mr. Mishler, thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Dean? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Board Member Mishler?
Yes.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brook?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
Chair Alfatall?
Motion carries, thank you. Board comments, do we have any comments from board members? I just would comment, I'm glad that we're all here, and we can move from the, through the agenda, and I also wish to express my appreciation for the folks that are doing presenting, that were prepared last time for coming back. We're looking forward to hearing the presentations that you have. Thank you for that. And then if I may, move to public comment. Do we have any comments from the public?
No, no public comments.
No public comments, thank you. On the regular agenda, item eight, adoption of a resolution confirming the reelection of David Alfatella's chair and Scott Powers' as vice chair for the Ventura County Consolidated Oversight Board. And we'll need a motion if somebody is so willing.
I'm, I move adoption of the resolution confirming the reelection of David Alfatell and Scott Powers.
I'll second.
That's Simons and Mishler. All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call.
Board Member Mishler?
Yes.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Aye.
Board Member Brook?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
Chair Alfatall?
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number nine, adoption of a resolution, excuse me, approving the 2020 local biennial notice for the Ventura County Consolidated Oversight Board's Conflict of Interest Code.
I have nothing to add, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bravo?
I have nothing to add, just-
Okay. No staff report. Do we have a motion to approve the Conflict of Interest Code?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Powers makes a motion?
I'll second.
From Mr. Simons, thank you. Any discussion? Then we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Mishler?
Yes.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brook?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
And Chair Alfatall?
Motion carries. Item 10, receive and file a letter from the Ventura County Consolidated Oversight Board staff to California Department of Finance in response to the DOF review of recognized obligation payment schedule submissions for fiscal year 1920, and receive and file letters issued by the DOF to successor agencies and review of the ROP submissions for FY 2021, and a last and final ROP submission, and provide direction to staff as and if desired. This is continued from October 28th, item number nine. Just receive and file?
Yes, unless you guys have some questions, I just wanted to reiterate, we did do a, we did send a letter last year, and, you know, obviously, we didn't have such great response from the DOF. For last year's admin budgets, we did receive, I think it's about five letters that we reflected of the board's approval of the admin budgets, and there were comments there by the DOF that stated that, you know, again, they were excessive. And so, you know, here we are again, we're embarking on the next year.
The train keeps rolling.
Yes.
Moving forward. Yes, Mr. Simons?
You had a couple of questions on this. These letters are a bit frustrating for me because I'm confused, I think, is the biggest issue, which is nothing unusual for me, but let me throw this out to you. There is some type of $250,000 regulation for these cities to be able to file, and I think that's a max. And then we get the DOF saying that it seems excessive, with nothing defining as to what they're utilizing to determine if it's that way. I mean, it's, I would like to find out, maybe we can write a letter to find out what filter they use, or what they determine as as being excessive, because we have no guidelines to determine that. We're going from our gut as to what we feel it is, yet we get these letters from the DOF saying they're excessive. Well, based upon what? I mean, is that a legitimate question to ask? And do they have the, so they, do they supersede the $250,000 max requirement? That's, that's already part of the legislation? What are the variables here that we have to deal with the DOF, is my question? And do we want to write another letter requesting their filter, or how they establish what is excessive, because we got numerous letters saying we're excessive, with no explanation, other than the fact that it's excessive, which is a real, kind of a broad statement to make without any guidelines?
Mr. Bravo, can you respond, please?
Yes, so last year, as I was developing the letter, I did, I did call the DOF, and I did speak with Jennifer Whitaker, the individual from the state that does write these letters. And essentially, she didn't give us a great answer as to, you know, a hard, fast rule, but she did, did mention that, you know, some of it is just tied to the level of activity they're seeing based on the ROPs, and that could be the number of line items on, on the, on the ROPs. You know, if they're, they only have, you know, say, less than 10, and they just have, you know, maybe just one, one bond issuance, they don't see the level of work that that would require to, for them to submit, you know, $250,000 for that. So, you know, again, it wasn't tied specifically, like, there's a hard, fast rule, but she was just saying, in general, if it looks kind of like, you know, there's not really much work that would be involved, say, they don't have very many properties left, or they, you know, there's just not a lot there, that that's, that's what, what they're looking at, and that's why they're, they're, you know, picking on those particular cities still.
Well, I, and I gather that, but that's not a hard and fast rule, and they're writing letters documenting that they're excessive, and I think it's only fair that they document what determines excessive and come up with a formula for it, so we have something to follow. Because we're supposed to be an arm of the state overseeing these things with no guidelines, and I'm assuming that the DOF has the authority to change those, those items financially, even though they fall under the $250,000 mark. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it, I would like to see us push harder in writing, requesting them to give us something in writing, as to what guidelines we can use for excessive, and see how gray or black and white that is, we have something going in the future, that's all.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't disagree with you, and just, just so you know, I never received any response from, from them, you know, the, my letter at all.
Well, right, but they certainly like, like, writing letters.
I agree.
So I don't know, that would be my feeling. Does anybody else feel the same way, or you okay with just having them write us letters every year, seeing where, we have to be more, we have to be a better oversight board?
I just would add, having served on five redevelopment agency successor, this has been going on for a long time. The Department of Finance has worked this way since the very, you know, beginning, and I'm not excusing that behavior, but I'm not sure they're going to change. And I don't know how the board feels about, you know, we can send a letter saying, hey, can you give us, you know, some specifics, which I think is what, Mr. Simons, you're asking for.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm just asking for a letter so we have on record requesting what that is. If they don't want to respond to us, like they have in the past, then it's on them, it's not on us.
Mr. Powers?
I agree. You know, I was looking at some of the cities that they call out, and it's not just the $250,000 admin budget cities, Port Juani and Fillmore, but they even go down to Ventura, which is 151. My assumption is she's using some sort of ROPs line items versus, and doing some sort of calculation there, but in our own interest, it's wise to make this request for our own, I would say, coverage, but that we're trying to enforce, but without this type of data point, we don't have that ability to identify what they consider excessive. So, you know, it can do no harm to write a letter and to at least make that inquiry and show that we're in good faith, trying to uphold, as Ken says well, that, what the, what we're trying to accomplish here.
So I hear two people asking for a letter. I'll add my name, I suppose, for three. Any other comments from board members, or anybody opposed to that? I think we have direction to put a letter together and see what we can do to push them to give us a response. Certainly, they tell us, you need to pay strong attention, and you need not just to approve these things, and I think, you know, this might be helpful in our ability to look at that and at least have some cover for what we're doing, you know, as much as we can, given the guidance that you're providing from DOF, so. We're good? Any other, any other comments on this particular item?
It's a good documentation for our pandemic.
Absolutely. Okay, we'll move on then to the next item.
Excuse me, Chair, you have-
Yes. I'm sorry?
You have two speakers?
I'm sorry, okay, we have two speakers. The, what's the process? The first speaker,
Jamie Bascarino?
I apologize, okay. So we have a speaker then for this item, Jamie Boscarini, or, excuse me, Boscarino, I apologize if that was a very poor pronunciation from Thousand
No, thank you, Chair Alfatall, board members. I don't have any comments on this. I just put myself down in case you had any questions for Thousand Oaks, so I'm ready to go on the, on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you. And how about Dory Boyer? Your mic isn't on, Dory? You're muted? You're still muted? Thank you.
I'm not muted, sorry about that. I'm working in somebody else's office and not, not used to their keyboard. I was just available for questions. The main thing is, is that $250,000 was the minimum that we were told we could ask for, and so that's what a lot of us asked for in the beginning, was, that's the minimum. We didn't meet the higher thresholds, and we're allowed to ask for 250. And then Department of Finance came back and said, oversight boards have the fiscal responsibility to reduce that amount, and so that's why you're now seeing this. But I, I agree with your determination of asking DOF for some kind of guidance, so that's a really good thing.
Thank you for that contribution, we appreciate it. So those are the only speakers for that. Now we'll move to item 11.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, including Ken's comments regarding writing a letter inquiring about the excessive definition, let's say.
I'd second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll move to roll call.
Board Member Mishler?
Yes.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brook?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
Chair Alfatall?
Motion carries, six oh. Item 11, conditionally approve eight proposed successor agency administrative cost budgets for the cities of Camarillo, Fillmore, Moor Park, Oxnard, Port Juani, San Buenaventura, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks, covering the period of July 1, 21 through June 30, 22. For inclusion, as part of these eight successor agencies, recognize obligation payment schedules for fiscal year 21, 22, and provide direction to staff as and if Now, we have, these are presentations for 11, or just speakers?
We have both.
I'm sorry?
We have both.
You have both? Why don't we go ahead and take speakers then on the item first? Would be Brian Ritchie, and second would be Frank Catania. Mr. Ritchie?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yes, my name is Brian Ritchie, I'm the accounting manager for City of Camarillo, and here to just go over the FY 22 admin costs. So, and I'll be here for any questions that you may have. It's pretty straightforward. We're estimating a total of 55,500, which is about 10,000 lower than we had last year budgeted, and it falls right in the middle between our actual costs in FY 19 of 59,000 and FY 20 of 49,000. So we have about 40,000 in staff costs, and I'll just go through briefly what that consists of. So, agenda report preparation, and management review, bond payment and disclosure preparation, accounts payable processing and review, financial report preparation, and annual reporting in the city CAFR, staff communication with Ventura County auditors and the Department of Finance, and staff meetings with the VCCOOB and successor agency board. So those are basically the main costs, and then we also have some, some indirect costs that you'll see, specifically the other professional services, that's our consulting services that we have for our ROP submission, first to VCCOB and then to the DOF. And so that's 10,000 that we have contracted for them. But that's, that's pretty much it, pretty straightforward, and I'm free for any questions that you may have.
So I'll ask the board, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ritchie? Mr. Simons? Unmute, please.
Sorry, thought I pressed that already. Can you remind me again, when a, when a city goes under budget, does that carry over to the next year or not?
When a city's actuals go under the budget?
Yes, under the ROPs budget.
Yeah, they're eventually, there's a true-up for it, so they, they look at the actuals and then see what we have available versus the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a thought on my part, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
From the beginning, I thought our objective was to bring this all to an end, but now with the pandemic, that's probably become impossible, but nonetheless, I think we still have to focus that that's, that's what we're here for, is to bring it to a close.
Thank you. Okay, let me, so, so thank you, Mr. Ritchie. We'll, we'll go to Mr. Catania from Fillmore, and then after that, Mr. Burhane from Moor Park. Mr. Catania?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah, we can hear you. I'm sorry if that's, if that was your question.
That was my question, thank you. I'm the interim finance director for Simi Valley, and I really had no involvement in the FY 2021 budget. I followed the guidelines for the 2122 budget submission, and it is basically geared toward the cost of disposing of the four remaining properties in Fillmore that I can address later. It includes not only legal expenses, general administrative costs, staffing, and also total indirect, indirect costs per our cost allocation plan. It does total $250,000. I suspect that when a permanent finance director is hired, that number may, may be reduced, but that's what we submitted at this time, and I'm available to answer questions.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Catania?
Was that, which city? I heard Simi Valley and I heard Fillmore.
Sorry, Fillmore.
So you're talking about Fillmore, correct?
That's correct. I formerly worked for Simi Valley, and it was just a slip of the tongue.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at this thing, I don't see, following up with Simi. So you're asking for $250,000. You have, you have four properties left, you said, right? You disposed of them, a couple of them, did you not?
We have disposed, we have not disposed of any, but we have incorporated about 20 of them into city ownership pursuant to the state legislation. It's designated for governmental use.
And that leaves how many left?
Four.
Four, and the status of the four is, you have them marketing right now for sale, or what?
One is in escrow, one is waiting approval by the city council for all, for the formal and final approvals to build. A third is a town theater that is currently being offered for sale under the, under the terms of AB 1486, and the fourth is tied up through a long-term lease purchase agreement adopted and approved prior to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency.
What was the last one again? I'm sorry, a long-term what?
It is, it is a piece of property that is, has, was leased on a lease purchase agreement to the Fillmore Western Railroad prior to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency.
Okay, well, so the Fillmore Western Railroad no longer- Okay, well, so the Fillmore Western Railroad no longer operates the railroad there. But they're still leasing the property?
They do store railroad-related equipment on the property.
Okay, because they're no longer operating on the railroad line? Or they will not be, because their contract's up? So, is that leased on a month, you said a long-term lease, so what's the term of the lease?
The original term of the lease is 2010 years. And there are two 10-year extensions at the option of the lessy.
So are they in the, are they in the initial term right now?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Are they in the initial term currently? You said the initial, there's option, are they in the initial term or are they in the option?
I just, I heard your question, let me just check that. The lease was executed in 2001. So they are currently in the second, in the first 10-year extension.
Okay, and so it will expire in 2021, correct?
2031. There are two 10-year extensions in the lease.
Well, I know, but what, it's one extension at a time, correct?
That is correct.
And when are they supposed to, when are they supposed to exercise their option for the next extension? Since 2000, is it mid 2021, early 2021?
The, the, the extension currently in place would expire in February of 2021.
Do they have a six-month notification requirement for an option extension? Or can they exercise it anytime the day before the expiration of that particular term?
I don't know, I haven't checked that.
Yeah, so their, their option may have, they may not have any more option rights at this point in time under contract. So I don't know what your costs are for that, managing that particular portion of the portfolio. If the lease is expired, what are you planning to do with the property?
We, we would have to look at what options are available in terms of development and disposing of it to a private party. It is adjacent to the railroad tracks and it is adjacent to the Fillmore Western's storage area. So it's probably not a particularly attractive piece of property.
Okay, anyway, has there been an appraisal on that?
Not on that property, that would still be relevant.
Yeah, I'm mentioning this to the boards because my guess is they're not going to exercise the option. They have no, they have no current business there that would necessarily support that. Their contract with the VCTC has expired, or is about to expire. There's a bid out now for other operators. So when looking at their budget, they hadn't even considered the possibility of having to sell it yet because they're not that far down the line. So just a heads up that on go-forward basis, that property may not be at lease anymore. It will be a potential asset to, to sell, and there's a cost of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. And, and just for my clarification, I think you're making the statement that they have not signed the option. My question is, is an option signed and we're not aware of it? Or is this first term, first option term up in February 21 and they have not signed? And, and, I, I don't know, Ken, if you were, if you were making a definitive statement that you were aware of? Or you were asking?
Well, yeah, like I do, I'm in the commercial real estate business, so I'm just
I understand.
I'm asking the question. Typically, if they're up in February 2021, most leases have a six-month requirement to exercise an option. I don't know what theirs is, it might be one day, I have no idea. But there is, it's probably less likely for them to rent the space for the next 10 years when they don't actually run a railroad down the line, just saying, you know. They may be in the car business, I have no idea. But I'm just following, following the crumbs that have been left to me, what the information would I have?
Yeah, and Mr.
But I would, I'd like them to verify whether the options have been exercised or not, or is, is it past the option period? Or if it's not, so they can make a determination and come back with us with a plan. Our job is to, as mentioned before, is to dissolve these properties that we have the capacity to dissolve and, and do the best we can for the agencies that are going to benefit.
Yeah, and Mr. Catania, for my clarification, are you aware, has a, has an option been renewed for the third term? Or no, if you know?
I do not know, but I can run that by our city attorney and send some information to the clerk of the board.
Okay. Any other comments from other board members or, or, yes, Mr. Powers?
Mr. Catania, I have a question, a different angle on this, which is, looking at your staffing costs, I see your city manager is on here for 320 hours roughly, I don't know, a little less than 20% of his time is being spent on these four, or I guess three properties. Is that, is that an accurate reflection of, of his time?
That is the breakdown that, that was established some time ago. It may not be an accurate representation at this point.
Yeah.
We will be submitting a ROPS request and these numbers may be significantly different.
And I see, I see finance director, assistant finance director, even, you know, even more hours. And with the amount of ROPS line items that you've cited in the work, I would challenge that, that amount of time being spent on these, on this. And you're one of the two cities with the, that are maxing out and have, with, and when we look at this from a holistic perspective, but compared to other cities, this doesn't add up. So I would recommend, strongly recommend, you reevaluate your admin budget moving forward, especially when ROPS comes around, because I'll speak personally. I'm not prepared to support them if we keep seeing this type of, of costs on the admin side without a proper, you know, without any justification for it outside of hours being spent, or being budgeted, I should say.
Mr. Mishler? You're muted, thank you.
Yes, I just want to second that. That was one of the questions I had here for Fillmore. They have a lot of their upper management personnel heavily allocated to this, to this item. And I just, it's hard for me to understand why it takes a city manager, like it was this stated, that much time and all the other members. I mean, typically you would have lower staff doing some technical follow-up work and stuff and keeping track of stuff, I understand. But to have so many high-level positions, you know, allocating their, their time to this looks very funny to me. It doesn't make me comfortable at all. And I just want to state that, this doesn't make any sense to me in a typical city government to have this many high-level people spending that much time on a, on a project like this. Thank you.
Mr. Simons?
Yeah, so the question to the city of Fillmore, I know how we do it in our budget. We have a city manager, might be a city manager budget. It may not be the city manager, might be the assistant city manager, might be whatever the calculations are. So my question to you, to, to Fillmore is, is this the actual city manager doing the work? Or is this, you've got a rate there of $141,000. I'm assuming it's the actual city manager, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, yeah, and that concerns me then too as well.
Any other board member comments? Okay, shall we move to the next speaker then, Mr. Burhane from Moorpark?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Call me Burhane for City of Moorpark. We have submitted our admin expenses and we have dropped the figures substantially from last year. And, and if, although we're getting closer to disposing a couple of our properties that we do have, we may be asking the board for a slight increase above the amount that we have submitted already. And as we get closer, we have an item that is going to council at the next meeting, which is December 2nd. And we will have more information, but possibly we'll be incurring a little bit more on appraisal cost and legal as we get closer to this. So I will know more before I submit the ROPS, I will keep you informed. That concludes my comments, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any board member comments or questions? Ken?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I happen to be involved in some of those meetings, disclosure, because I'm on the city council of Moorpark. But one of the things that I'm, I'm pushing for, being in the real estate business, is that when they make these properties ready for sale, there's updates of surveys and things like that, that some cities just don't get to sometimes. And they've got to be taken care of so you can have a quick sale at some point in time when the agreement goes ahead. I don't know what it is in the other cities. But I know that the city of Moorpark is going to be very clean when they sell these things. And so that's why our finance directors made that comment, because I'm pushing them to make it pretty clean so we can get the stuff done up front and be done with it.
Great. Perfect, thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Oxnard, Adam Smith and/or Todd Mooney?
Adam Smith here, City of Oxnard, good afternoon, members of the board. Oxnard's administrative budget reflects the gradual wind down of successor agency operations. In upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 22, we're proposing $199,000. However, I anticipate when we come back to the board with our ROPS, it'll be revised lower based on some pending agreements that we're working on. I'm speaking on this and, on item 13 later this afternoon. But as it stands right now, our budget is $199,000 for fiscal year 22. But like I said, will probably rise downward. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Board member comments? Seeing none, how about we move to Port Wainimi, Dominique Clark?
Good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we did submit an admin budget for Port Wainimi. I'm sure a lot of you have noticed that we are the other city that is requesting a $250,000 budget, which is identical to prior years. We did change the allocation of some of the line items based on our analysis of admin expenses in the past. And the reason why our budget is $250,000, which is the max, is because the successor agency actually spends more, but obviously we're capped at 250,000, so that's what we ask for. I do want to emphasize that we do provide backup documentation of all of our expenses, including admin budget expenses, to not only the county auditor, but also to the Department of Finance. And they reviewed everything and they've never denied any of the expenses that we've submitted. And I understand that there's concern about excessive admin budgets because of the language put in the DOF letters. But I agree with some of the comments that were made earlier. We would also like to hear more from DOF about how exactly we should, or how they determine what is considered excessive when each agency operates differently. The majority of our budget is for staffing costs. And the successor agency needs that budget in order to pay for their staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, any board member questions? I see Mr. Powers and then Mr. Mishler.
Hello, Mrs. Clark. My question is related to, I understand the DOF comparison and the issue with the excessive, and you're right, and we've talked about that. I'm looking at this from a different perspective, which is incomparable to other, to your, your brother and sister cities, the other nine cities in the county, and the cost they're reporting. And I need to understand the difficulty we have, or I have, when it's not seeing the equity in, in, in the different cities. I can call out them all and go through them all and, Oxnard is a prime example of 19, I believe, ROPS items. And with a minimum, with less admin costs than yours significantly. And so when we look at it, you have to understand, you know, there's just a lack of understanding for me as to how, how they're, how they're so different than other cities. And I know we've gone through this a year ago and you guys did a good explanation, I'll say, in terms of explaining the difficulties, working with the DOF and working with the auditor's office and other things. But you have to understand, you know, when we look at these costs and with us being the subsidiary, not subsidiary, but, but an arm of the state in some ways, I want to say, you know, I really would like you to reevaluate that. You know, if you say your costs are even higher than 250, then something's amiss. I recommend you maybe meet with Mr. Smith of the Oxnard or another city to understand what the difference is and maybe even report back to us so we can get better clarity on that, if that's what's necessary. But, but something has to give in terms of the, the admin budget from the cities, especially Fillmore and Port Wainimi, in my opinion.
Mr. Mishler?
Yes, I just want to second that. And it's basically the same argument in that when I look at, excuse me, when I look at some other cities, Ventura or something, you know, $118,000 or whatever. And how come other cities can be operating with the same number or more conditions when then you're coming in, you know, more than twice as much in terms of expenses? And I understand there are audits and stuff, but you, but other cities are getting by and been able to do the same type of equivalent work, in my opinion, for at least half the cost that you have. And we also, obviously, if we go through and look at the properties and stuff, we need at some point to wind this down. I mean, if we keep spending $250,000 for the next 10 years, that's probably more than the, all your property, your property's even worth or something. And I mean, at some point, as a city, you, you have to get a handle on this and get it down to where it's just a routine function and not costing so much. So again, I'm just agreeing that I, I'm not very comfortable here with Port Wainimi's numbers and why they cost so much, especially when we compare it to other cities and for, you know, maybe what it looks like, the same amount of work. Thank you.
Ms. Brooke?
I wanted to also have you guys consider that 60% of the $250,000 lines in, in staffing costs, of which you just allocate various. It's not very descriptive. If you say you have all this documentation and backup, then I would suggest providing it so we can see, like if you look at Fillmore and Oxnard, they're very definitive on what they're, what their rates are and how many hours they're providing. I would highly suggest that you follow the same type of formatting. And there were two others that had the same type of various. If you can't be descriptive on exactly what it is, then maybe it's not important. Thank you.
And if I may, Ms. Brooke, I think it's apparent that this, this conversation will continue in the future. And this won't be the last unless it starts coming down. Or you, as Ms. Brooke just stated, give some detail for us as we go through the process of conditionally approving and/or approving. So just information for you. Any other comments on that item? No? Ventura, Dory Boyer?
Hi.
Hello again.
Thank you, Chair Alfatal and board. Our budget has reduced down by approximately $26,000.
Dory, we're having a little difficulty hearing you, like you're in the distance.
How about now?
That's better.
Better? Okay, I'll move my microphone up.
Thank you.
The, our, I'm sorry, it keeps coming up saying that my host has stopped my video, so I'm not sure what's going on. But, okay. All right, our budget has reduced down by $26,000. For this year. The main reason for this is that, why it wasn't more is because unfortunately we did not able to get a lot done in the last 12 months due to COVID. The biggest reason that a lot of my time and legal costs are budgeted is because we still have two million items on the ROBS that we're trying to get approved by the Department of Finance. Both of them are sponsoring entity loans, money that the city loaned to the REA way back when. We have all the documentation, we've gone through everything for the first one, the public art loan, and got denial. public art loan, and got denial from the Department of Finance, did the meet and confer. And we were getting ready to go to city council to ask them whether or not we wanted to pursue a suit against the Department of Finance to continue, because we're talking about this particular loan is about $1.5 million. And unfortunately, with COVID, the board's focus was on other things, and so this didn't happen. We probably won't be able to go back to the board, the council, until January or February of this coming year. So I'm not sure how soon we'd be able to know anything. If they decide not to pursue, then that will probably mean we'll just request Department of Finance to remove both line items. But we have to be very cautious. We have to get the public involved because this is taxpayers' money that went into the sponsoring entity loans to begin with. So that may take a lot of my time. It also takes outside legal time. Just to give you some guidance on this, we will, because we did request that money, you know, a large amount for my time and legal costs last year, that money will be removed from our funding in future years through that true-up process. So it's not that it rolls over. We have it in our books, but it's going to be taken away because we didn't spend it. So that, it's not that we're doubling up or anything. As you can see, I, our staffing, I'm the only staff person left. We also will be having new board members coming on, new council members. So that means always having to have meetings to bring them up to date on all of this. We've had major management changes at the city of Ventura, and it's been very time consuming bringing them up to date on what this very convoluted process is. A lot of my time has been spent trying to get, not only in my department, but in the city managers and in the finance department up to speed as to what all this affects. So in essence, everything else has reduced down. If we do remove those two line items, then my staff time and legal time will go down. But we really won't, I don't think we'll have that figured out by June of 2021. I'm pretty sure it's going to go into 2122. So that's the only things. Otherwise, we're the same. We have to provide documentation for all of our costs and any of the true-up process. They have been removing money from our future amounts because I can only estimate. And if things go the same way as what we think 10 months ahead of time, then that's what the true-up process is for, so that we're not given more money than we should be. So I am open for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Michler and then Mr. Simons.
Yes, hi. Thank you very much. Good to see you again. And my question is, and I'm not sure if this is for our legal counsel or what, but you're saying you're training, you're spending a lot of your time, you know, training and bringing up the speed, new people on management or council members. And I'm just thinking out loud that, should that be a city cost? I'm not saying you're not doing the work. I'm saying, I understand you're doing that, but is that really a successor agency cost? Or is that really a cost that should be supported and funded through the city itself, independent of what we're doing here? If that makes any sense what I'm asking. I'm not sure if our legal counsel has any feedback or guidance on that.
Hi, this is Jacqueline Smith from the county council's office. Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm happy to look into the definition of an administrative cost if it's provided in the statutes and report back to the board. I don't have that answer off the top of my head.
Okay, well, thank you. You understand what I'm asking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If I can't...
I'm just saying, should that fall on the city side or should that fall on the successor side?
What, if I can't, what our interpretation is, is if there wasn't a successor agency, I wouldn't be having to do any updates. So consequently, it would be a city cost if I was just talking about what I do for the city if I was working on some other program. But because of the fact that the successor agency does exist, and I'm having to do that work or provide documents to them or do that, that's our interpretation of being able to bill to the successor agency as a portion of that. Again, I don't think we've ever looked into the exact definition, but that's been our interpretation.
Mr. Simons?
Yeah, well, mine's actually a similar question. You mentioned that you're looking at potential lawsuit? Okay, so if there was a lawsuit, does the successor agency have to pay for that?
The current talk right now is if the city chooses to do a lawsuit, the cost will go to the city. The city will be responsible for the costs.
So going back to Mike's question, is the preparation for that lawsuit, is that a city cost or a successor agency cost in respect to talking to your city council members about what you should do? Is it a 50/50, 100% us? Or how's that work out?
Our interpretate, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
How are you allocating that? How are you planning to allocate that from a time basis? 100%, 50%, what?
Right now, what we've decided, working with my, our legal counsel, our internal legal counsel, is doing everything to go up to closed session to decide whether it's going to the board, to the full council. That would be, my staff time would be successor agency. If they choose to go ahead with the lawsuit, then my time becomes payable to the city and not the successor agency, and the legal costs will be carried by the city. So it'll be at the time when they make the formal approval to sue, then at that time, it becomes all city costs and not successor agency. But the preparation to get the information and all that to the board is as a successor agency right now.
Okay, so I would debate that a little bit, only because it's the city that's looking at the lawsuit, not the successor agency. The successor agencies already filed the appeal, may have been denied. So their job is kind of done, and now the city's got to look at whether they want to go ahead and file. So I'm just throwing that out there.
I will, I will bring that up as a possibility, and if so, then my time will be adjusted accordingly, and so will the legal costs. I'll find that out and bring that. I'll have a better handle of it when we bring the ROPS back for your approval in January.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Brooke?
So I question on your hours, you have 1,664 hours of the work year is pertaining to the RDA. That's 80% of your time based on a 2088 normal work calendar. So that translates to 9.6 months full-time out of the 12 months you do full-time RDA work. That's, I mean, when I read those numbers, that's what I'm interpreting, is that you spend 10 out of the 12 months full-time on RDA.
At the time that I completed this budget, that's, that's what was allocated at. I've gone back, as you can see from the previous year, I did use 1,664 hours last year. And so when they did my budget for this year, they did the same for the 2122. So a lot of it depends upon, again, I didn't use as much because we weren't able to accomplish as much, but I am the sole remaining RDA person, and we are still going through a lot of paperwork, a lot of digitizing and all of that to keep our historical records that are required by California redevelopment law. I'm the one that does all that. Digitizing all these records, that's not part of city clerk or anything else. That's what I do in addition to doing all the audit work and everything else. Yeah, I, I don't know if it's nine months. I mean, I could possibly come down further than that. I will do a more detailed analysis.
Take 1,664 and divide it by 2088, which is a standard work year, that's 9.6 months of the year you're charging of your time to this.
I understand.
Okay.
Anything else, board members? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dory. And let's ask to hear from Brian Gabler, Semin Valley.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. We're presenting to you our administrative budget for the next upcoming ROPS. Very similar to the other budgets. I've indicated in the past that our business is to get out of this business. We just wanted to take our minimum money and move on to do bigger and better things. If you look at our budget submittal, you can see that we actually got our hands slapped by DOF back in 1718 budget year and took an accounting of what our time spent was with the administrative budget. We reviewed with DOF a budget allocation model of applying hours at an hourly rate based upon our departments that are involved in working on this. And that's the methodology that we have been utilizing. You can see that our request for the next upcoming budget year is a little over $54,000 based upon 30 hours of city administration time and 40 hours of our fiscal services time. These are minimum hours. It would probably take more time to figure out what those exact hours are than to just ask for the minimum amount and move on. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Gabler? Seeing none, back to Jamie Boscarino from Thousand Oaks.
Good afternoon, Chair Alfatal, board members. Jamie Boscarino, I'm with the City of Thousand Oaks Finance Director. We're presenting our fiscal year 2021-22 admin budget to you. As you can see, we have decreased our request quite a bit, 68,700 in total. So we went down from 186,700 last year to 118,000 for fiscal year 2122. With that, I am available for any questions.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you very much for that information. And now, I suppose, we'll get to the point. This is a receive and file. Is there any more discussion to be had on these items? Am I missing anything?
Just a comment.
Yes, Mr. Dean.
I feel sorry for our crews out there trying to complete this mission. Our assignment here is to make sure those come to an end, and there doesn't look like a horizon where that's going to happen. And the salaries will keep going out without results. So I don't think we have a direction at this point, or we might come out.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, I'd just like to comment that it's not a receive and file, it's a conditionally approved, the admin budgets.
I was looking at the other agenda item. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Powers first, oh, Mr. Simons, go ahead, and then Mr. Michler.
Yeah, so I have a tough time approving these numbers here. So what do we do?
Mr. Michler?
I have the same, I have the same question as a follow-up. I mean, I'm looking at Fillmore and Port Waiimi especially.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, Scott, did you have a question?
Just clarifying, maybe with staff, this approval of the admin budget is conditional approval. So it's kind of a, yeah, we recognize what you're doing. Please move forward in your ROPS and include this in your ROPS. It's, it's no more than that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. So, you know, we have, I think we've been pretty, we've sent a strong message to two of the 10 cities regarding our concern, I'll say, over the amounts. And I hear, you know, what Miss Board Member Michler and Simons have said, so perhaps we move forward with conditionally approving the other cities and leave it for the remaining two cities to support, to bring their ROPS and to bring it forward. I don't think we have time for the next board meeting. I want to get to this whole rigmarole of coming back, you know, all the time. Do we have any more board meetings coming up before ROPS is approved in late January, early Feb?
So we will potentially discuss a couple of special meetings that we have placeholders for later. We'll talk about that, December 2nd, January 13th. But our next regularly scheduled meeting is January 27th. And they're due, they're approved at the January 27th meeting, is that correct, the ROPS?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, there would have to be something before that to conditionally approve for moving forward.
Is there any other planned need for meetings in the next, those other two meetings, as far as you know of today?
No, no, there wouldn't be any other items that we're anticipating. It would just be to bring this back if we needed to.
What's a quorum?
I'm sorry?
What's a quorum? How many?
Quorum is four? Is that what it is?
Four, yes.
Four.
Okay.
Well, we have quorum today. I don't know.
Today we do.
Yeah.
But I may not be here after this month.
Okay. You'll be back on January 27th?
No, I didn't get reelected, so.
Okay, got it.
I should mention the same thing here. I'm stepping down officially December 1st.
Okay.
And the special districts will have to have an election to put another person in.
And we're checking with the city selection committee if I can still be applicable with confirmation from the city of Moore Park, the city collection, selection committee. I'm willing to serve, but I should put it, Robert's going to check in.
This is, this is county council. Prior to today's meeting, staff for the CEO's office asked that I look into this question. And by statute, members of this board do not need to be elected to the governmental entities to which they represent. So the fact that members of this board did not win reelection doesn't impact their eligibility to serve on this board. These are appointed positions by the various cities or successor agencies. So if, for instance, a member did not win reelection but wished to continue serving on this board, they could through their term of appointment to this board.
Oh.
So I could stay on the board then?
Until your term of appointment for this board ends. And I'm not sure what that date is.
Like it's gone, so you maybe stuck with me for another year or so.
Well, then in that case, yeah. Well, that case, I can stay on then for an indefinite time period here right now.
But Jacqueline, is it possible for one of the other entities, the special districts or the city, to name someone else? And if they don't, then these two gentlemen stay on until then? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that the members currently appointed to the board can remain on the board through the term of their appointment. So I'm not sure what the appointment terms are, but the successor agencies could also appoint someone else if they wanted to do that. But in the meanwhile, members of this board that are currently serving within their term of appointment can remain on the board.
So I think there's a...
Kind of what I understood it to be too, but I wanted to verify that.
Yeah, I think...
Mike Michler here. I'm a little bit confused because I was elected to this position in independent special districts. We had an election, and I was the person who had the most, I won the election, and so I was appointed to this. But, yes, you need, so, and technically, that continues until I step down. But I had assumed, and maybe this is where you can help me, if I had lost my, I've lost my election, so I'm stepping down on December 2nd from my position here. So does that mean I can still continue to serve? Or do I have to?
Yes, you can continue to serve on this board through your term of appointment to this board unless and until the appointing, the entity that appointed you appoints someone else.
Okay. Well, then, what, okay, what I'll do then, I'll go ahead, for clarification, knowing that information, I'll go ahead and continue to serve until we get this result. I'll go ahead and continue to serve until we get this resolved later at some point.
Yeah, I was hoping for the same answer, so then I'll schedule accordingly, because there's a lot of work to do here still. And I'm proud to be part of this group here, and I think we're doing a good job. We find a good path here, so.
So I didn't catch a last couple of things, but let me kind of paraphrase. I think that it's fair, I think it's a fair statement to say that there's a chance that the folks that appointed you are not going to change that appointment in the next couple of weeks and that you can attend another meeting or two, which then leads to the question is, do we want to approve six of the eights and have a special meeting to deal with the other two? Or what's the pleasure of the board? And there would, somebody would need to make a motion, I suppose.
Well, my first response is following up Commissioner Brooks's comment. Anybody that has a variable cost versus definitive cost on their staffing has to resubmit. We're not going down that road, to put it that way. And it has to make common sense because there's so many hours in a month, there's so many hours in a year, and you have to justify the allocations. Mind you, we're happy to do that, but you have to justify it. It's not here, we're putting a number in here, and here's how we support it because we do that for three or four years. Our job is to proceed forward. So, yes, those definitely, those two, but is there anybody else on there? Commissioner Brooks, maybe you can help me out here. Was there another city there that had variable expenses?
Yes, there was, well, Port Wainimi, Camrio, Moore Park, and then I stopped counting at that point, had variables. The two of them were small, but I still think if you're charging payroll, you should know what you're charging. You're having to turn in time sheets, and you're having to pay people. You should know what they're working on and provide the documentation for it. So those were the two, and then I stopped my little checklist because I got stuck in the how many hours in a day in a year conversation.
I'm sorry, which agencies? You said two or three?
I had three so far. Port Wainimi, Moore Park, and Camrio, for sure, had various in their staffing. And that looks like it.
So I'll say we can conditionally approve some of them, none of them, and come back again? Or all of them and see what changes when they come back in January for the ROPS? So I would ask for a board or, excuse me, for a motion or additional comments?
I'll take a shot. So with regards to the variable costs, you know, I don't have an issue with evaluating those further. I was pleased to see, you know, some of these cities really reducing, Thousand Oaks, for example, and some other cities. Camrio, I'm comfortable with. I see it's fifty, fifty-five thousand dollar admin budget compared to other cities. So that isn't my, that isn't the purpose of what I've been looking at, which is really the two cities that remain at two fifty and continue to submit to fifty. So I'll make the motion from this perspective is to approve, I believe it's five cities that we've all, actually, not five, I'm sorry, there's not, there's not ten. So we've talked about Camrio, talked about Port Wainimi, Fillmore, and I'm sorry.
Eight, I believe.
Eight?
Eight.
Okay.
Camrio, Fillmore, Moore Park, Oxnard, Port Wainimi, Ventura, Simi, and Thousand Oaks.
Okay. I'll make a simple motion. I'm not real interested in that right now, so I'll make a motion from my perspective, which is for the cities of Fillmore and Port Wainimi to resubmit a budget, admin budget, by December fifteenth. And if we find that budgets aren't satisfactory to us, we reconvene January thirteenth for the meeting to discuss all those items that we're talking about, but mainly those two, which is Port Wainimi and Fillmore.
And we would automatically have to reconvene as a group if those come in December fifteenth?
If they come in, and I guess we'd have to rule on them, right? We can't just make an arbitrary decision by looking at them and saying, no, well, we're good, but we're fine with ROPS on the January. So we need a January thirteenth meeting regardless, is what I'm really hearing. December second's tight.
Except for he's asking for December fifteenth to receive information by, to give them an opportunity to work on that, which I think is fair.
Just trying to give them time, but give us time to react. My concern is though, come January thirteenth, we hit the same place we're hitting now. And it's up to this board whether they, you know, want to approve their ROPS. And that's a significant action, you know, that there's a fine to the city if it's not approved on a daily basis. And I don't want to throw that, it's not a threat, it's not a, like that, but it is the alternative, which is if we're not satisfied, we're not getting what we want, that is our, that is what we can do. We can't direct them what to do in terms of costs. We can't tell them, you'll charge two hundred thousand dollars. We just can't accept what they are submitting in their ROPS. So that's my quandary, is, you know, I don't want to give them direct direction and clear direction, but also give them opportunity to evaluate what they're reporting. And I'm specifically Fillmore and, and I hate to pick on them too much, but I keep saying those two cities' names. But the purpose is to, you know, Oxnard should be the most expensive ROPS organization right now, organization charging on their ROPS because of the complexities and the number that they have, in my opinion. And to me, that, they're the max, and that's what I like to see.
So Mr. Powers, just for clarity, would I, I'll ask you to repeat your motion?
Darn it.
I don't butcher it. I think I know what it is, but if you don't mind.
I'll try again. Yes, thank you for giving me this chance to reiterate it. So the motion is to give two cities till the middle of December, December fifteenth, to resubmit an admin budget and for our board to reconvene on January thirteenth to evaluate them.
And to approve the other six.
And to approve the other six today.
Conditionally approved, yes.
Today.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we.
I think you need to mention the two cities.
He did. He said Port Wainimi and Fillmore.
Yeah.
So, and approve the other six, which Camrio, Moore Park, Oxnard, Ventura, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks. Mr. Powers made the motion. Mr. Dean seconded. Is there any further discussion? Then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Mishler?
Yes.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brooke?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
Chair Alfatal?
Yes.
May I say one more thing, Chair?
Yes. Motion carries six oh, yes.
I just want to reiterate, I wanted to restate, you know, what Mr. Brooke and what the other board members said. Perhaps that could be step two. And our next steps on the admin budget is to give that granularity that you're requesting, which I agree with. At this point in time, trying to take this in maybe two phases, I'll say. That's all.
Thank you, and thank you all for participating. Let's move to item twelve, receive and file presentations by the successor agencies for the cities of Fillmore. I think Moore Park is not presenting today. Did I?
Correct.
Catch that right at the beginning. So Fillmore, Oxnard, Port Wainimi, Ventura, and Simi Valley on their efforts to discharge their statutory obligations to dispose of assets and wind down the affairs of their respective redevelopment agencies.
Excuse me, it's Oxnard that's not presenting. Moore Park is.
Okay, I apologize. Oxnard is not presenting. So Mr. Catania from Fillmore.
I touched on this information earlier, so I'll be brief. The city has four parcels designated for sale in the long-range property management plan. One is a point-three-seven acre parcel vacant that was acquired in nineteen ninety. It's currently in escrow for a purchase price of two hundred five thousand five hundred dollars, and it's slated for twenty-six apartment units with a commercial element. The escrow is scheduled to close when the prospective purchasers have submitted a development agreement deemed complete by the city in accordance with a purchase and sales agreement. They have not yet submitted their revised application, but it will, is expected to come in by the end of the year. The second parcel is an eight-tenths of an acre site near the downtown. It was acquired for economic development purposes in October two thousand five. The property is proposed for sixteen condominium units with a retail component. The project has been approved by the planning commission and will be submitted to the city council for final action early in two thousand twenty-one. It was, the property was reappraised in May of two thousand nineteen and is valued at three hundred thirty thousand dollars. The third site is the Fillmore Town Theater, which was acquired shortly after the Northridge earthquake, restored and opened in nineteen ninety-six. It has been vacant and out of operation since two thousand eleven. In accordance with AB fourteen eighty-six and with the city council approval, letters were sent to a number of governmental agencies as well as a hundred and sixty-seven firms that had previously notified the State Department of Housing and Community Development of interest in surplus land. One firm expressed interest, and the city has requested a formal proposal. The required ninety-day negotiation period ends on January third. The fourth item is the property that is under a lease purchase agreement with the Fillmore and Western Railroad. And I'm going to get back to the clerk of the board regarding whether or not a second tenure extension has been requested. That concludes my report.
Sorry, no, I had turned it off. Thank you. Mr. Catania, are you still on the line?
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just was asking if you were finished with your presentation. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, that, I've concluded my presentation.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, please, yes.
Mr. Powers.
Mr. Catania, I was curious about the Tower Theater, and I know you mentioned earlier and just now. Can you be more, a little details about the efforts to, what you're trying to do with that property these, currently?
Certainly. The city council has been torn for a few years in terms of what to do with it. It's considered a community icon, but it provides no public benefit at this point. The city initially, prior to the adoption of AB fourteen eighty-six, did a request for proposals process in an attempt to obtain an arts group to purchase the building and provide cultural services out of it. That got no response. The city council then realized that the best option would be to sell it. And the city attorney went ahead and started sales efforts in July of two thousand twenty to place it for sale in accordance with the terms of AB fourteen eighty-six. One firm expressed an interest in the theater and were waiting for them to submit a formal proposal during the ninety-day negotiation period.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next presentation is Jessica Sandler, Moore Park.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, board, or chair and members of the board. I'm Jessica Sandler. I'm the community services manager for the city of Moore Park. Next slide. As an overview of all of the properties listed on the successor agency's long-range property management plan, there were five properties that were listed as retained for economic development. Two properties are still currently held by the successor agency, five hundred L.A. Avenue and one five four oh four Princeton Avenue. Three, the other three properties were purchased by the city after the proceeds were paid to the taxing entities. And in August of this year, after a slight delay due to COVID for everything, I guess, we hired Cosmont Companies to assist us with marketing and sale of the two remaining properties. Next slide. So this is the Princeton Avenue property. It's currently vacant land, and it's a light industrial zone property, approximately two point two six acres, about one and a half acres are usable. As I mentioned, the title's currently held by the successor agency. And through the marketing process that Cosmont conducted for the successor agency, we do have pending with the successor agency on December second approval of an exclusive negotiating agreement for a potential housing property, or project, rather. Next slide. And five hundred Los Angeles Avenue is a former Caltrans maintenance yard. It's currently leased to an RV dealership for RV sales. It is a one point eight four acre property. And the current status of the property is that we're, the successor agency is going to be considering an exclusive negotiating agreement with the tenant also on December second. Next slide. The ENAs are going to provide for one year for entitlement of projects and negotiation of appropriate conveyance instruments for the sites with, you know, disposition of the properties to occur no later than two years after the date of the ENA. The, to note about these properties is that both of them were bond-funded properties. They were purchased with the tax-exempt RDA bonds. So consistent with the bond covenants, the proceeds of the sale will either go into an escrow account to redeem the bonds or go back to the bond fund for bond purposes, and that will be determined by bond counsel. And next slide. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to Port Wainimi, Dominique Clark.
Yes, good afternoon again. So Port Wainimi just has one property that they needed to sell. All the other properties listed on the property management plan were for governments' use. So the one property for sale is actually two parcels, but they're adjacent, so we're putting them together. And the address is one hundred Panoma Street. It's a vacant property that's about two acres. And it was categorized on the property management plan as property retained for future development. And so the plan stated that the properties would be transferred to the city, but the successor agency would pursue compensation agreements with each of the affected taxing entities. So we've been working diligently to follow that plan, and we prepare compensation agreements between the city and each affected taxing entities. And the agreement specified that the taxing entity approves of the property transfer to the city for market value, and each taxing entity would receive their share of the purchase price as determined by the county auditor controller, who would disperse the funds to each of the taxing entities. And the purchase price was identical to appraised value, which was one million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So as of now, all of the compensation agreements have been executed, and we are in escrow, and we anticipate closing by the end of this month. So that concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Powers.
Ms. Clark, is this the property that you're working with, the port of Wainimi, on sale?
Yes, we are in active negotiations with the port.
That's the one. Okay, just want to check. Thanks.
Mr. Mishler?
Yeah, I just want, yeah, basically the same question. I thought this, Port Wainimi was, the port itself was interested about this, the port district. And it's, so I'm confused. Is it going to go to the city first and then to the port district, the intent?
Correct. We have to follow what we said we would do in the long-range property management plan, which was to sell it to the city. And then the city can negotiate with whomever they would like to, but they are in active negotiations. and then the city can negotiate with whomever they would like to, but they are in active negotiations with the port.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brooke, I'm sorry. Did did you have a question? I I guess not. I saw a flash on my screen, so I wanted to ask. Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Dory Boyer from Ventura.
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Sorry, difficult hearing you or or we can't hear you? Much?
Can you hear me now? Mic check? Can you hear me now?
Not not, no, not well enough.
How strange. Okay. I didn't do anything different the last time.
Okay, try that.
Hello?
Perfect. Better. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was better for a minute, but but less so now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So if you want, this will be the wind down effort and our property disposition update. What we have for the wind down is we have till two impossible allegations that we're still dealing with, which is the sponsoring and the loans. We're hoping to have some determination on that during 2021, but that's going to be going into 2122. We have one last payment for our CRAF, which is the supplemental education revenue augmentation fund.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dory. I don't, you're cutting in and out and I don't, I don't know why. I don't know the cause of this, you know, where you're holding the mic or or what, but I just wanted to make that comment. It's, we're all focused and listening, but we're we're hearing, you know, three words and then less two words. So so keep going.
Ken, is it any better right now?
No.
No, I am so sorry. It must be my.
That's that's better there, but I'm not sure if you.
Right there?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, I will not move. I will not move.
Not yet, yes.
So the CRAF payment, we have to repay that and the last payment is scheduled on ROPS 2122. That was based upon a very convoluted computation. But once that's that payment is made, that that line item goes away. You have two bonds, one ends in 2027, one ends in 2038. However, we don't have to wait that long for doing a final conclusive. Once we get toward getting the properties done and all that, then we can negotiate how to do the bond payments and then we can file a final conclusive. We do have three remaining sites for property disposition. So a lot of the the final conclusive depends on the sponsoring NAD loans, the bond payments and the property disposition. Property disposition process, there's been no environmental mitigation issues on any of the sites. The property was transferred from the red, is transferred from the redevelopment agency to the city at the time of the transfer sale. So it's all as one one transaction. And then the city of Ventura transfers the title to the purchaser through a grant deed process. So that kind of gives you how the whole process works. All the costs of the site disposition are borne by the city, not the successor agency. Even though for us, the city Ventura, our just our interpretation was that because the city can recoup all costs for the disposition of these properties, charges are of the city. My time spent on that is is part of that cost. All the other time, and this is one of the things that I'll be getting back and really looking at my time as to how much is charged to RDA versus what's been charged by budget for the the long range property management. All the costs are tracked by site, so I have a very complete accounting of how much is is for each site. And then it's reimbursed back to the city from the sale proceeds. We've done that on two, on our site three. The remaining, the balance of the sales proceeds are sent to the county. Taxing entities, we've had our compensating agreement all the way since 2013. We had that all negotiated already. Provided, in the past, I provided a breakdown of how much have gone to all those entities in our last sales. Next slide. So the remaining sites, we had seven to start with. The remaining sites are site two, which we had a purchase and sell agreement. Escrow has just been delayed and I'll go into that. Site six is the same. We have a purchase and sell agreement. Escrow has been delayed. Site seven, we're in negotiations and that's supposed to be 1486 and not 1422 property. We did not have a signed agreement in place as of January 1st of 2021. The disposition of the prior sites, sites one and five were transferred to the city to continue as public parking. The site four, there was, we found a title error and we completed that correction in 2013. And site number three, we actually sold in 2016 and the taxing entities received their portion. Next slide. So this is where all of our sites are, just to kind of give you an overview. As you can see, they're all in our downtown area of Ventura. And most of them are, some of them are comprised of two adjoining sites to make up one. Next slide. First one I want to talk about is site two. If you're familiar with Ventura, there's a bond shopping center at the end of Main Street before you go over the Santa Clara River. And this side is directly across from it. It's L shape. It surrounds a corner mini shopping center. And then there's businesses along to the east of that. The property has been, the approved purchaser is the owner of the properties to the east in that same block. He's going to incorporate that into his whole development. And next slide, please. And that's a overview. As you can see, it's vacant. People are using it for temporary parking, but it's very awkward shaped and the only access is off of Garden Street. Next slide. So this is some background on it. It's continued commercial retail mixed use development. The purchaser is abiding by all that. He's going to at first improve it as a public parking so that, because we do have Patagonia, that's one block over. And so he's going to improve that as a parking area for for right now. Does get it and also for his tenants and his buildings. And then he's also in the thought process of negotiating with the property that's on the corner to be able to develop that whole block. For our purposes, we're going to be selling it to as an improved parking lot at at this time. Next slide. Issues that were impacting the value of this, we we've done two appraisals in 2015 and one 2017. The location, the physical characteristics.
We're, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're, you're faint.
Okay, I'll bat right there.
That's good. Good for now.
The location, the accessibility, there was existing, there's existing these ones already. And then the site assemblage, most people that wanted to purchase it want the whole block and that wasn't something we could do. So we we did our request for proposal 2015. Patagonia actually was the one that we chose to go forth on that because they were going to to use that. But then they requested a termination in April 2017. Next slide. That meant we had to go through a new RFP process, at which time we chose Addison Main Street Trust, who is the adjacent property owner. Unfortunately, as you know, Ventura got hit by the Thomas fire. And since this was in our downtown area, our purchaser was highly affected by the Thomas fire, not only professionally, but also personally. And we ended up starting escrow in May of 2019. And we were getting ready to go through the entitlement processes and everything else. And then COVID hitting is if he has a lot of real estate, both residential and commercial, and he's affected severely by a revenue reduction. So we've agreed to extend the escrow until 2021, February 2021. So we're hoping that by the end of this fiscal, our fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2021, this this property will be sold. We'll keep with our fingers crossed. Next slide. Next one is site six. It's at the corner of Figaro and Thompson behind Tony's Pizza and adjacent to the 101 freeway. Next slide. So that's just an aerial. As you can see, it's awkward. There is no driveway going off of Figaroa. There's just a little driveway that goes off of Thompson Boulevard. And it's adjacent to those trees that you see between the freeway and the side. That's a drainage ditch. So next slide. Can be a restaurant, dense commercial, retail, mixed use development and next slide. So the issues were location, physical characteristics, site assemblage, all that. We had an appraised value of 317,000. We just updated that appraisal 2020 and it stayed the same. We've done the preliminary title report and all of that, so it's it's free and clear. In March 2016, the adjacent business owner of these barrios at Tony's Pizza was approved as a purchaser. The purchase price was $277,000. We had the purchase and sell agreement was tied to entitlements and alcohol use permit process. He's been approved for those. Unfortunately, the purchaser was affected by the Thomas fire, again, because it's in the downtown Ventura area. The escrow was delayed and then the lender required an update, the updated appraisal and updated buyer per forma, which now goes through. Finally getting to that, actually in February of 2020, I spoke to the lender. They were, you know, yes, we're getting, we're approved it, everything. And then with COVID hit, the purchaser lost revenue and the lender wasn't available. The Ventura Credit Union, all of their staff was hit by all of the business loans that were coming through as as part of the COVID response. So we're back kind of on track. The lender has asked for an updated three month revenue and that ends at the end of November, so we're hoping to close December, or actually next month. So he's actually been doing very, very well. So we're hoping, we're looking at the revenue being good enough to continue with this. Line seven, I mean, site seven is right below the city hall. We're at the top of this slide. And it's two RDA sites and there's also two city sites. And it goes all the way from California all the way over to North Chestnut. So you take that red area, it's the four, four parcels and the two of them in red are the RDA owned sites. Next slide. Here's it, here's an aerial of what we're talking about. So it's behind the Century 10 dealer. Next slide.
Hey, Dory. Hey, this is Scott. Just a quick question. Is there still plans with that with Trade Desk?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be like the next slide. But this is 15,000 square feet for the total, total square feet for these two sites. It could be business, retail, office, commercial, restaurant, mixed use development. Slide please. So we started this process in August of 2016 for the request for proposals. Trade Desk was approved as the purchaser. We had a lot of pre-negotiation back and forth as to what they wanted to do. There was talk about what would happen because they're they're public parking lots. How would we deal with that and replace that public parking in their downtown area? And the purchase price was going to be a million dollars. And that was based upon the prorated, that's prorated for the RDA portion of it. Since that time, Trade Desk has actually bought the vacant Bank of America building that was at the corner of Main and Chestnut. So that's how committed they are to developing the site. It's just a lot of moving parts and a lot of negotiation. Next slide. This is how the appraisal broke down back then and then we did another, we just got through with another appraisal. Unfortunately, because we did not have a purchase agreement signed by January 1st, 2020, this whole property, all four parcels had to be offered up to for, to the affordable housing developers as part of the AB 1486 process. And that's where we're kind of stuck right now. Also now with COVID-19, Trade Desk is a worldwide company and they've been hit worldwide with COVID response. The other thing is that how committed this worldwide company is, they started in the city's incubator, which our technology incubator, which is in the building behind city hall. And they've now taken over two floors and renovated two floors of that building in addition to several other sites in downtown for their staff. That's how big they are. And they want this particular parcel to become their headquarters. So it's really a boon to the city of Ventura and continuing negotiations and the process with Trade Desk. Just trying to figure out how, we're still answering questions from all of the responses that we got from the AB 1486 process, so we don't have an idea yet. Hoping we don't have to actually entertain anybody's development proposal because how awkward it is, but we have to go by what the law says. So hopefully we can continue, but that negotiations are stalled until the AB 1486 process is is done. Next slide. So the issues that we have is we have one RDA parcel that's completely landlocked. Some site assembly required the existing easements that's on there. We're having to work through all those. The delays was Trade Desk global expansion. Unfortunately, we started in 2016, but then because they're global, when they went public, my gosh, they were having to go all over the place and deal with stuff. And so then they'd be gone a few months and they'd come back and start doing negotiations again. Then we had the Thomas fire. AB 1486 is, was involved as of January this year, COVID as of March. So with that, we're hoping, hoping to open escrow in late spring of 2021. Closing is going to be 120 days after that. Next slide. And that is the end of my presentation and I won't take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler has a question.
Yes, hi. On the site number seven, is it actually a parking lot now and generating income? And if it is, where's that income going? Is that part of your, is that going into the successor agency or somewhere else?
That is a public parking lot, no fee. No charges for those park, that parking.
Oh, it's a public parking lot.
Public parking lot.
I'm just wondering. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Simi Valley, excuse me, Mr. Gabler.
Good afternoon again, chair members of the board. I saw my slide briefly come up. I'm not sure if it's coming back again. We have one parcel that the Simi Valley Successor Agency is working with. I'll just pause. There we go. Excellent. All right. Next slide, please. Very briefly, this will give you kind of a bird's eye view of the particular location at the top of the screen. What you're seeing there is the Simi Valley Civic Center and a community park next door. Next slide. This will get you a little bit closer in. As you can see, the Tapout Community Park is on the left. The particular location is immediately adjacent to the Simi Valley Senior Center, located next to the Simi Valley Library, City Hall, Police Station. There's a Kaiser Permanente facility and a DMV on the, on the location as well, along with the courthouse. Next slide. The property was purchased in 2007 by the city and then subsequently acquired by the Community Development Agency. Original intent was to blend it into our Civic Center site for potentially a senior housing at that location. The used to be, there was a house there at that time that had 320, 3802 Avenue to Simi address. That's just short of an acre, zoned RM. And as I mentioned again, it's, it's on the Civic Center site and you can see by the aerial, it is vacant. Next slide. Through the long range property management plan, the Department of Finance approved the disposition of the property for re. disposition of the property for retention for future development. However, that development would require any compensation agreements going forward for the final disposition of the property. Next slide, please. In October of this year, just a little while back, the city had previously been working with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation regarding this property. They had a proposal before the City Council to build a three-story apartment building of 35 units of senior affordable for low and very low apartments. The, this particular development would require a general plan amendment. On October 5th, the City Council considered the general plan amendment and approved it to move forward. And at this point in time, Cabrillo has one year to file a formal application for consideration by the planning commission and the City Council of the proposed project. This, their proposal on October 5th did not have a lot of opposition from the neighborhood, so we are encouraged that this project will be able to move forward. Next slide. And then just real quickly, this is kind of an overview of what the project is, because there are two residential units immediately to the west of the property. You can see the parking lot is on one side. Thirty-five units are stacked up on multi-levels, three-story building, set back away from the street, allows a one-story element on the street, and then stepping back away from the kind of the birthday cake scenario that allows the massing to be at the rear of the site. Immediately to the right of the location is the parking lot for the senior center, so having an affordable senior project on this location is very advantageous, and we continue to work with the developer of Cabrillo to get them through that process. Next slide. More happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board member questions?
I just wanted to say, I'm glad to see these properties, and especially in Simi Valley, as Mr. Gable said, is going towards affordable housing, which is obviously a large priority in this county, so that's good to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gable. This was receive and file. Do we need a motion for that, or?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to receive and file. Second?
Hi.
Mr. Dean, and we'll do a roll call on that then. Thanks.
Board Member Michler?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brook?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
Chair Al Fatah?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six oh. Okay, item 13, adoption of a resolution approving Agreement Number A-8246 between the Oxnard Community Development Successor Agency and Mini Mansions, and also the adoption of a resolution approving Agreement Number A-8247 between the successor agency and the City of Oxnard Housing Authority. Is there a presentation?
Yes, there is.
Okay, is that Adam, well, the presenters, we have Adam Smith, Emilio Ramirez, Todd Mooney, Luis Hernandez, and Derek Wada, the last two from Mini Mansions, the first three from Oxnard. Mr. Smith, you're...
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Board members, good afternoon again. I'm Smith, City of Oxnard, with a presentation for you today on the remaining successor agency-owned parcels in the City of Oxnard. So this is kind of related to the previous item, item 12, but I'll go through the presentation and be available for questions afterwards. Next slide, please. So as the Chair said, stated, the recommendation is for the Oversight Board to adopt a resolution approving an agreement between the successor agency and Mini Mansions, and another resolution between the successor agency and the City of Oxnard Housing Authority. Next slide. So this slide, it kind of just details the process of redevelopment and how it came to an end in February 2012. The board members should be pretty aware of the following bullet points. But the CDC was formed in 1968, and over the intervening decades, formed project areas, redeveloped multiple properties, constructed affordable housing projects throughout the city, and just worked on a whole host of other projects throughout Oxnard, including downtown Oxnard. However, in February 2012, when redevelopment came to an end, and then with the dissolution law prohibiting the former redevelopment agency, the CDC, from entering into any new contracts or commitments or projects, redevelopments throughout the city, especially in downtown Oxnard, came to a halt. Next slide. At the outset of the dissolution law, staff back in 2012 identified 51 properties that belonged to the successor agency, and of those 51, some were designated as governmental use, subject to transfer, and others were slated for disposition. Of the 51 properties that we had back in 20, identified in 2012, seven remain, all in downtown Oxnard, east of Oxnard Boulevard, both north and south of Sixth Street and north of Seventh Street. Next slide. The Surplus Land Act is something to be cognizant of, because in December 31st, 2020, the Surplus Land Act would go into effect, which basically states that any property is not under some sort of agreement, like a purchase and sale agreement, or an exclusive negotiating agreement, would be subject to the Surplus Land Act, which basically restricts an agency's use, like a successor agency of a property. We couldn't use properties for commercial or industrial uses. Oversight of the successor agency's properties shifts to Sacramento through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Additionally, agencies would have to declare surplus land at a public meeting and include them in our housing element. And then finally, 30% of a property's final land price would be imposed as a penalty for noncompliance with the act. So in summary, it presents significant challenges and places stringent procedural requirements on what a city or a local agency like a successor agency can develop on its properties. Next slide. The first property I wanted to discuss tonight is a subject of one of the ENAs, and this one is between the successor agency and Mini Mansions. It's right here, labeled number one with the arrow. Mini Mansions. The concept would be to develop some sort of pocket park accessible to the public. And you could see both north and south of the successor agency parcel, Mini Mansions has proposed some affordable housing developments, which I will talk about on the next slide, please. So the first property, north of the successor agency, number one, 100% affordable, 88 units, which will also include 1,400 square feet of common and commercial space. And then Project Two, oh, Project One is still conceptual. Project Two is a little bit further along in the process. Eighty-seven units, also 100% affordable, and will have 2,300 square feet of common commercial space. Next slide. The following ENA is proposed between the successor agency and the Oxnard Housing Authority for four of the successor agency properties. You can see that the Long Range Property Management Plan, which was the document that laid out all the successor agency real estate assets, has declared broker opinion of values. For parcel number two is 37,000. Parcel three, 90,000. Parcel six at the south end of this map, 43,000, and parcel seven, 43,000 as well. The funding source, the proposed funding source for the Housing Authority to acquire these properties would be in new affordable housing fees, and the conceptual use would be more affordable housing. There are small issues with acquiring these properties, and that adjacent to each block, there are private properties that we would have to determine the best use of some sort of land assembly. Next slide. So here is the conceptual properties for the Oxnard Housing Authority. If you look at the north side of the map, north of Sixth Street, you can see in yellow there, that's the one private property. But that project, the concept would be potential townhomes. And then in the southwest corner of the map, you can see in yellow as well, that parcel is private property. The one just west, adjacent to that, is owned by the city, and then to the west of that, the blue square, is currently a parking lot owned by the city. The proposed conceptual project would be up to a six-story mixed-use, affordable housing development. Next slide. Which leaves two remaining successor agency sites. We currently have no current plans for development of these two, and staff is proposing putting these on the open market, subject to the surplus land act that I spoke about earlier. Next slide. Next steps. So the staff, we presented these ENAs to the city's Housing and Economic Development Committee on November 10th, just last, and it was forwarded to the successor agency and Housing Authority Board, which last night, we presented these ENAs to those two bodies, which were approved. Today, we're in front of the Oversight Board for approval. If the board does approve, we will send these ENAs and the resolution to the DOF in Sacramento. They'll have a 40-day review period. And of course, the December 31st deadline, the Surplus Land Act, we want to be cognizant of. And then looking forward to 2021, staff intends to begin negotiations, and then hopefully present purchase and sale agreements or development disposition agreements to the successor agency Housing Authority, and then of course, the Oversight Board for approval. And then of course, we forward on to the DOF after we go through that process. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have. We also have on the line our Housing Director, Emilio Ramirez, as well as some representatives from Mini Mansions. Thank you.
Any questions?
Quick one.
Mr. Dean?
Is the Mini Mansion project probably the first one on the line?
You want to ask a question to the Mini Mansions?
Well, no, to the presenter.
I'm here, but we also have representatives from Mini Mansions on the line, if you have a specific question regarding their proposed project.
Okay.
So did you not, you don't want to ask a question? Okay. Okay, any other questions from board members?
I can't hear you.
Well, no wonder, because I'm muted again. Thank you, Ken. Any other questions?
Well, I just want to make a comment. Is, so this is it. You're down to two properties after all this to put on the market?
Correct, yes.
Because we were at a big list, not too long ago.
Oh, well, I think, are you talking about the successor agency assets that we?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one, we're going to be coming before the board in January, so I don't know how much more I could speak on that, because it's not on the agenda.
No, no, no. But so, so these are the real property assets that are left, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct, Member Simons.
Okay, so, good. I'm glad we're that far along.
Yeah, we've made a lot of progress. You know, COVID, of course, has slowed everything for everyone, but the last weeks and several months, we've made some real strides. So this is just another gradual and eventual step in the process of winding down the agency's real estate assets.
Now, on the two properties you put on the market, are those, I mean, you're going to have to follow the 1486 on that, correct?
That's correct.
So there'll be housing, and are they near housing currently?
There, yes. There is one housing development that's across the street on Seventh Street, just north of those two parcels. And then of course, if we're successful in these ENAs before you today, there'll be more affordable housing around them in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Powers?
Yes. It's a good presentation, great presentation, and I'm glad to see some more affordable housing being constructed. My question's maybe for Mini Mansions, but it's one line of where you are in terms of the process of these projects, and Project One and Project Two. I see one is conceptual and one is submitted, and can you be more definitive in what that means?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Luis Hernandez, a project manager of Mini Mansions. In terms of the status for Project Number Two, it's further along. We are expecting to receive full approvals, including our environmental approval sometime in December, January. The other project is probably about six months, six to 10 months behind schedule. In terms of financing, we are subject to public funds that we pursue through the state of California, the local city of Oxnard, as well as the county of Ventura. And so we do anticipate the completion of those projects would probably be around the end of, around 2024, 2025.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? See, yes, Mr. Simons.
Since I've been involved with one project of Mini Mansions slash Housing Authority in more part, will there be any requirements for carryback or any type of trustee issues to get your financing, make the numbers work from the city?
Not in this scenario. So as Adam described, so that we are proposing to develop a pocket park, we do get some benefits in terms of tiebreaking scores when we submit our applications to the state and for tax credits. But no, the other two properties that we are working on are privately owned. One of them we have acquired. It does belong to Mini Mansions, and the other one we have under second control via an option agreement.
What about Section 8 filters?
We are assuming some Section 8 vouchers, and we are working with the Oxnard Housing Authority for, at least currently for the project number two, and that's further along. And when the time comes and we're ready, we'll be submitting an application for project number one to the Housing Authority.
Okay, so all within the 24, 25 timeframe?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
So move.
I'll second.
We have Mr. Powers made the motion. Mr. Dean seconded, split second before you, Mr. Simons, so we...
I tried.
We do have a motion and second.
There must be the delay in the network.
It might be, might be.
It might be. Any further discussion? Then let's take a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Michler?
Yes.
Board Member Powers?
Yes.
Board Member Simons?
Yes.
Board Member Brook?
Yes.
Board Member Dean?
Yes.
Chair Al Fatah?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. I believe this brings us to the end of the meeting. True. I just would like to thank everybody for participating, for anybody that happens to be still beyond, and also, of course, the board members. Been a good meeting, I think, and not too long. I've been in certainly a lot longer meetings. But I just would also comment that don't forget to put on your calendars, January 13th, for a special board meeting, as we, you know, agreed to earlier. Hopefully, we'll at least have quorum, if not everybody. And unless there's any last comment, yes, Mr. Simons.
I'd like to wish everybody a healthy and a happy Thanksgiving. And since it's January, and the happy holiday... And since it's January, and a happy holiday, how have you celebrated?
Fantastic.
Are we going back to morning meetings or will we be speaking?
Morning meetings, I think, this, this was the only thing that could be worked out. So, I think they'll be back to morning meetings. All right, without further ado then, uh, we are adjourned and we'll see you soon. Thank you.